All right, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to order the Board of Education meeting. Next on our agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That sounds amazing. All right, I seek a motion for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Role calls finds us all present with the exception of Sue Heing, Madam President, Mary Lynn Donahue, and Rebecca Versi, who will be showing up shortly. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Abstained. I wasn't here, so.
Thank you, sir. Record shows that Ryan Bergabstains, so everybody voted. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have diplomas by Kay Robbins and Jay Conrad.
Okay, so we have some high school diplomas which we would like to confer. We have two people present that will be, the names that will be receiving their diplomas either here or later are Holly Backus, Emily Keel, Savannah Heng, Ariat Yonkins, excuse me, Sadie Martin, and Nathan Mullin. I recommend that we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. All right, so we do have two of those students in the room to receive their diplomas. Parents, if you want to come up and take a photo with them, without them, now please. Come up. First, we have Emily Keel. Were there any other named diploma? All right, next agenda item, we have a community input. Seth?
Yeah, before we begin community input, Santino, I just want to make sure that the crowd is glad you're with us tonight, glad that you're here. We wish every board meeting, we had this type of participation. It's always great to see people and celebrate the great stuff that you just saw here with kids graduating, of course, as our capstone. Just want to clarify, if you hadn't looked at the agenda, there is no discussion, the board is not taking any action, and there's no discussion whatsoever, the board today in open session regarding anything to do with the current negotiations of the base wage that we've had between the SCA and the district. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to you, Santino. Just want to make sure everybody understood that. And the board, obviously, and Santino reads the guidelines for community input, you'll hear that the board's not going to comment, debate, or engage in conversation back. So turn it back to Santino.
All right, do we have anyone in the audience that would be speaking today? All right, so you guys can start making your way up to the podium. There should be a assignment sheet, and I will read the guidelines. Welcome to this meeting of the Sheboygan Area School District Board of Education. We are pleased that you're interested in education issues. We are interested in your comments and concerns about the school district. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate that the following guidelines be followed by anyone wishing to address the Board of Education this evening. Number one, please send the comments or suggestions to three minutes or less because we do have a full agenda to follow. Number two, comments and suggestions of the school district are welcome. Personal criticism and/or derogatory remarks directed at members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are out of order. Number three, if you wish to provide input and would like to be recognized, please raise your hand after being recognized. Please stand and clearly state and spell your name and address for the record. Also for the record, please sign your name and address on the clipboard after you have spoken. The board normally receives citizens' input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or a response to a concern or issue, the superintendent or one of the administrative staff members will get back to you within the next week. Thank you for your assistance. All right.
Jackie Yerbowski, G R N D O W S K I, 2732 North Avenue Street. Good evening. I have been a social studies teacher at North for three years, four years old in the district. After working as a substitute during our pandemic hybrid year, the ongoing joke was that by accepting a full-time teaching job, I was taking a pay cut. Fortunately, that was legitimately true. In only a couple months, my rent has gone up significantly. I mean, hey, I'm 26 years old with a roommate. I continue to struggle to afford my rent. I've had to work several jobs in addition over the years to still manage living paycheck to paycheck. My story aside, though, I'm speaking today to advocate for all teachers, new and experienced. We talk a lot about teacher retention. When I think of retaining teachers, I don't think of newbies like myself, I think of the veterans. Teachers who endured the drastic aftermath of Act 10 and the attacks on a profession. Teachers who overnight became virtual instructing experts. These veterans who fall in the middle of the pay scale far too often feel forced out of the profession because they financially have to. Whereas those in the middle who do thankfully stay are rewarded by having to work two or even three jobs just to get by. If our district is unable to adjust for the cost of living, the cost of truly existing at this rate, these incredible educators who have 10, 15, even 20 years of experience will have no choice other than to leave our district or even this profession entirely. And when they do leave, the educators, or the mentors, I'm sorry, they're gone. I can confidently say on behalf of all teachers at the bottom of the pay scale, if these educators with so many years of experience above us find themselves unable to stay in the profession we love, then we will all suffer in the end. According to an Education Week article from only last Thursday, when adjusted for inflation, the average teacher salary is $3,644, less than it was a decade ago. So not only do certain teachers' income levels lag behind their fellow educated peers, but persistently depress wages, threaten teachers' ability to keep pace with rising costs of living. So that being said, as seen board members, this is my honest and open plea for all educators to earn an appropriate adjustment for the cost of living. You all serve a beautiful district. It's why after attending Cooper, Urban, and North, I knew my home would always be here. But that dream can't remain a reality if the backbone to our schools, our award-winning, nationally, oh, I'm so sorry, nationally certified, out of this world accomplished professionals truly can't afford to teach here anymore. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Jasmine.
You have to hold it a little closer to your mouth, please.
Hello. Okay. My name's Jasmine Blakely. I live at 3305 North Avenue, Sheboygan, Wisconsin. I'm starting my fourth year as a teacher in the district and at Jefferson Elementary as a third grade teacher for all of these years. I more so want to share personal story with you about my life and how this has been impacting me as a mother to a six-year-old and a nine-month-old daughter. I want to start off by saying I love my job, I love my students, and I love my school, but love does not pay my bills. The cost of living has gone up 8% just this year. What that means for me as a family of four is that my grocery bill is 1/5 of my monthly income. My family is scraping by and not able to save like I would like to to be able to buy a house. At almost 30 years old, I am not able to afford a house like many other people before me have. When we go to get our groceries and daycare, daycare starting in September, which I've been thankful to not have to do daycare till September, it will be $1,060 a month. That is 1/3 of my monthly income, going straight to someone else watching my child so I can go teach other people's children every single day. This summer has been one of the hardest summers of my life financially because on top of the fact that my salary per year, as my experience, is in the bottom 25% across the state, I also did not get paid for my maternity leave. I had to use all of my sick days, which wasn't very much as I've only been, had two and a half years accumulated. Also, my short-term disability would only pay for four and a half weeks because my maternity leave fell over the winter break. So I only got 40% of my salary for four and a half weeks, and then I had to use all of my savings to cover my rest of my maternity leave to spend time with my newborn child. That means this summer, instead of enjoying time with my children, I was sitting there wondering how my bills were going to get paid, deciding which bills got paid so then I didn't get evicted because I do not have enough money in my savings account to support my family because of the salary you get paid. So part of me wants to leave teaching, but part of me knows I love this job more than anything in the world. I love my students. I reach out to them over the summer. I talk to their families every single day. But again, love does not pay bills.
My name's Christopher Kettles, 3123 North Conan Drive in Sheboygan. I'm a special education teacher over at Farnsworth Middle School. I'm going into year six. I'm on the SCA exec board, and I'm also part of the teacher meet and confer group. Message is simple. My colleagues and I firmly believe in the we mentality and working together for the common good and shared success. However, it's not sustainable, nor is it acceptable, for this district to simply adhere to this principle when there is general consensus between both groups. In times such as these, surely the whole ethos of we is that we work together to find a solution, middle ground, that works for us all. If this district truly believes in the we mentality, I look forward to us getting back to the negotiating table as soon as possible to broker a teacher compensation agreement that works for everybody, not just the district. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Caddy. I live at 738 South Main Street, Cedar Grove, which is outside the district, but I'm a special education teacher at South High. And I'm proud to say that I'm beginning my 30th year of teaching in this district. Over the course of my career, I have held a variety of positions within the SCA, have been an active member of various district-wide committees, have been a member of and head of SCA negotiations team, and meet and confer. And I appreciate the chance to speak today. Consensus, decision-making, that's what this district, that I have called my home for my entire career, has been built on. In reflecting on what to say this evening, I looked through my notes and files and thought very carefully about why I have stayed here so long. I found a letter I read to the board almost 10 years ago highlighting the fact that since approximately 1995, the SASD has worked through the consensus process to make decisions. I noted that it had been a lot of hard work and thousands upon thousands of hours to develop the trust it takes to make this relationship work. I went on to say how despite Act 10 and Governor Walker's attempt to tear our district apart, we've continued to work through a very similar process with our meet and confer, and that trust was the foundation of our relationship. I was addressing the board that evening because we wanted your support on a proposal that the administration team, the SCA, and the retirees had worked on together, like we had so many times before. But tonight, I find myself in a very different position, and I'm wondering what has happened to the consensus process. Where has the win-win mentality gone? And at what point did the district decide that working with the SCA is no longer in the best interests of kids? Consensus decision-making makes, builds shared ownership, shared power. It sets us apart from districts that impose policies. And at a time when teacher turnover in Wisconsin surged in 2023, reaching a high of 15.8%, and one in three teachers will leave the profession within the first five years, now is not the time to walk away from the consensus process. If anything, we should be training all staff in this way of thinking. Seth was able to share at our new mentor training this week that the SASD turnover is one of the lowest at approximately 7%, but that can change and will change if the we-them mentality continues and takes hold. As you discuss the budget in closed session tonight this evening, please think about the hard work that the board and the SCA have put in over the past 30-plus years. Remember that consensus is built on finding common ground and a solution that works for all and doesn't offer the same solution over and over. The consensus process allows people to feel valued and respected and is worth the time and effort, and we, your teaching staff, are worth the effort.
My name is Robin Bollinger, B-O-L-L-I-N-G-E-R, and I live at 3006 North 9th Street in Sheboygan. I'm a teacher at Urban Middle School, and I'm here to discuss the importance of teachers getting a fair raise. It is imperative that we recognize the role educators play in shaping our future and the urgent need for our compensation to keep pace with inflation. I relocated to Sheboygan last year, my hometown. During the past year, I've noticed a lot of teacher openings and shortages of applicants. The school district has billboards in Milwaukee seeking teachers. New teachers need to live within driving distance to Sheboygan in order to work here. The top expense we have as adults are housing and food. The median home price is $240,000, according to the Wisconsin Realtor Association. That is a 39% increase since 2019. It's been a 9% increase just for this past year. Renting has also significantly increased in Sheboygan. On Realtor.com, the average rent for a two-bedroom is $1,400 a month. The price for food has raised 7.7% for the year ending as of April 2023, according to the Department of Labor. As prices surge, teachers often find themselves struggling to make ends meet, leading to stress and dissatisfaction. In the last year, house prices have risen 9%, food 7.7%. Offering teachers a 4% raise is asking teachers to make less money this year compared to last year and does not entice new teachers to apply. Providing a fair raise is an investment in education, in our children's future, and in the well-being of those of us who dedicate our lives to nurturing children. The time has come to stand up for our educators and let us rally behind the call for a fair raise for teachers. Acknowledge our vital role and ensure we can keep up with the cost of living. It is not just a matter of fairness, but a testament to your commitment to the education and the betterment of our society as a whole. Thank you.
Hi, Scott Gelenek-Zittehl, J E L I N E K hyphen Z I T T E L, okay, 4600 Nicole Lane. For those of you who don't know me, I too, of course, teach here in the district. I'll be starting my 28th year at North High, teaching English. When asked to come up here and speak, you know, kind of on the behalf of my colleagues, I too had to winnow down a lot of what I wanted to say, but it's safe to know that we love our job, and that's why we're here. But I have to be honest and tell you that there are many times throughout a school year I'm sad. There are times I feel heartbroken. I feel abandoned. I feel let down. And these are complicated emotions to process, but they are the ones that I have been left with. Several years ago, it's been referenced, there was a sea change in political funding for education. Since that time, I and many of my colleagues have been stagnant, stationary. The cost of living, as many people have said, continues to go up, and it's passed me by many years in a row. So there is part of the loss, but more importantly...
I'm not sure I understand.
More, more, more importantly, I was told by many of my local administrators at that time, do more. Just do more. If you take on an extra duty, if you take on a co-curricular, that will help you stretch this financial gap. So I became a department chair. I became a learning leader. I was a mentor. I was a coach, right? You know that mantra, okay? It's unsustainable. That was a short stopgap way for me to fund some of the income that had stopped coming in. So what I'm here doing is I'm asking, I'm begging, I'm pleading to support us and to fight for us the way we fight for every single kid that walks through the doors of this district. Thank you.
Hi, Bill Meyer, 3515 North 33rd Street, Sheboygan, M U Y E R. I've been teaching 30 years at Farnsworth Middle School. 32 total. I'm going to piggyback off of what Scott said. I've done just about every intermarial coaching thing that you can do. The only way to get more pay as a teacher of 20-plus years is to do something extra, okay? Lunch duty, et cetera. Do something. Looking at my top three salaries, when I go, I actually go tomorrow down to Madison to talk about my retirement, which could be anywhere from one to three years. One of my top salaries is from 2015. So I have not seen any jump really since then on my pay from my teaching duties, okay? That gets real frustrating. Also, the top end or the people that are 20-plus years, seems like the district is doing, we're not getting quite as much as the, it's not the same across the board. Somebody was telling me 1% to 2%, a little heavier at the bottom end. I really would like the district to think about everybody's the same. I know they take the pay off of the base. Why don't we use the average teacher salary and take the pay off of that? I have two sons that are, that both graduated college. They've been in the workforce for two years. I wouldn't let them become teachers, which is sad. I didn't want them to. I said, there's no, you can't make it in the long, the long end. They have both in the past two years got, have received 10% raises for the past two years, and they questioned me and wondered why, well, how can, how can, how can they not be giving you at least cost of living? Last week, my homeowner's insurance came back, that rose 30%. Okay, so the $25 that I'm going to get with my raise that I got last year, the $25 a month, which would have turned out for me, that's not going to cover my, my homeowner's insurance. And if yours hasn't gone up yet, it's going to be going up. Just some things to consider. I would also like the board to consider and think about looking at sick days and how sick days work in the district. I have 110 sick days built up right now. Many people are using sick days to get, to get their money back or their days off. They're taking days that they may not actually be sick. I heard people complaining and saying that they're, you know, somebody that's pregnant needs days. I could give days to people, okay? I also could be taking 110 days and working three more years with barely coming to work. So I would love to see something in the future, if it's not this year, next year, whatever, I may be gone, but please consider something with the sick days, too. Thank you so much.
Rebecca Letter, 1213 North Avenue, and I teach at North High. I wish I could talk to my colleagues as well as to you, the school board. I would tell them it's time to stop pretending the culture of we that once existed still exists. We desperately want to hang on to a time in this district when what we had to say did not fall on deaf ears. What we wanted or needed mattered, and when working together for a common goal was something that was achievable. People have been and will be up here talking about salary, CPI raises, and such money. But that's not because that is all we want to be talking about. It's because that's all we're allowed to fight for anymore. We're no longer allowed to negotiate over things that have made this job more difficult. Class sizes, the frequent illegal ratio of special education students in supported classes, instructing things we are not even qualified to do, working without adequate support staff, or even lunches that happen at 10:00 AM or 2:00 PM instead of, you know, at lunchtime. As such, we find ourselves displacing all of our frustration onto the fact that our pay does not reflect what we do, the education we have achieved in order to do it, nor that while we have no longer been able to do anything about our workplace, we have continually been asked to learn more, teach more, accommodate more. Personally, I'm not speaking today because I doubt my school board does not know and understand how much its teachers have given to this job. I am, however, concerned about how the meet and confer discussions have gone regarding raises in the past months. It's a shame the very humans who are supposed to be supporting us and present to you what is needed to secure the best teachers and education for our community's children are pretending they don't know this. When it comes to budget talks, they suddenly have blinders on to this concept that educators have had to learn more, teach more, and accommodate more. And shame on anyone who accuses the union of pushing aside the we mentality simply because we are standing up for wanting an adequate raise that reflects all we have done for our district and this community. We simply want all that we do to be reflected in our pay. I am hoping this board will strongly consider the fact that providing a raise that meets CPI will go a long way for both retaining teachers in the district as well as demonstrating that you value us and all that we do. I also hope that you ask the critical questions we have been able to get answers to. Despite how difficult being an educator has gotten, we're still here. We stayed because we love working with children. We love giving back to our community and being an integral part of it by educating, coaching, and supporting its children and families. Yet here we are tonight in our sea of red to demonstrate that at some point, we aren't going to just smile and nod and accept the next ask after a pay cut without letting you know that for many, it's getting to the breaking point. So again, I am pleading with this board to strongly consider rejecting any proposal that does not meet 8% CPI. Show us that you still believe in the we.
Good evening. My name is Penny Abstetar, A-B-S-T-E-T-A-R. I live at 2831 Erie Avenue in Sheboygan. I'm the lead teacher at Central High School. I am a 28-year employee of the Sheboygan Area School District, and my sons have attended SASD schools since they were in 4K. Additionally, I am the assistant chairperson to the teacher meet and confer team. As you've heard, the negotiations regarding professional salaries have stalled. This is true. However, I need to inform you that I am uncertain, and I believe our team and our members are uncertain, as to why we have stalled. An examination of the financial state of the Sheboygan Area School District shows we are in a very good place, we are in a strong place, and I would like to acknowledge the fiscal carefulness and responsiveness of our district leadership to put us in that good place. As an example, as recently as March of this year... As an example, as recently as March of this year, this school board approved a motion to save the school district almost, just under two million dollars by using an excess levy to prepay debt. So, when the suggestion is made that the proposals that have been brought to negotiations by the teacher meet and confer team are unsustainable or may throw the school district into further debt, I don't see the proof of that. To begin with, the difference between the proposal that the administrative meet and confer team did and our current proposal is seven hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Now, in individual life, that's a huge amount, but to grant, and you may have heard that we would like that to come out of the Fund Ten General Fund, I certainly do. Based on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget report by Mr. Belkey that included the amount of fund balance held over, accessing that cost, those thousands of dollars would result in just a little over one percent reduction of that holdover. And it would keep in excess of a forty percent holdover in that account. But that's just a Band-Aid, and I know you're concerned about the long term. It is the twenty-two percent increase to the Fund Ten General Balance over the financially challenging years since two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, that I look to for proof that, that our proposal is sustainable. I find that increase to be proof that granting professional staff, something closer to that cost of living increase, would be accomplished in a fiscally responsive and sustainable way to the long term. It is to that end, I hope we return to work at the negotiations soon. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Apostolic. I'm going into my fourth year teaching at North, and I, my address is five forty South Twenty-sixth Street in Sheboygan. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'll keep this short. I wanted to share my summer, like many of those before me. My husband and I welcomed our second child in late June. He turns two months tomorrow. And this summer, I participated in teaching summer school virtually so that my husband and I were able to continue to pay bills and live in the comfort that we wanted. I was checking emails the morning after I gave birth, still hooked up to the IV for summer school. And my two-month-old son will be starting his first day of daycare on Monday instead of me taking my maternity leave. He'll be starting his first day of daycare on Monday so that my husband and I are able to afford daycare so that I'm able to continue doing what I love so much. But as of Monday morning, with two kids in daycare, daycare will be taking approximately seventy-five percent of my paycheck. Again, I don't have the exact specifics, but I know it's about seventy-five percent. And this does not include diapers, wipes, and formula if we would need. So, I just wanted to share another story about summer and us having to meet ends and continue to doing what we love, but pushing us to the point where it's hard on our families.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lynn Glouy, four seventeen Birchwood Street in Belgium, but I am a chemistry teacher at North High School. Like Elizabeth, I didn't plan to speak tonight. And the last time, I think I spoke, it was the summer of COVID, and I spoke to you about remembering that the teachers are the, are the people in your classrooms with your kids. It's us that are implementing your policies, your ideas, we're there. What you may not have known is that, while I was here talking to you that night, my dad was in hospital and eventually dying of COVID. But I chose to be here. I made that decision because I hope that when you're talking about those policies and those decisions, you had me in your head. You had, that we're real people making our families and our ends meet. I knew that I felt valued by the district, and I felt that stories mattered to you as a board. Tonight, I looked at the district's priorities, that next week Seth will talk to us at South High School as we go back to school. Your second pillar is attracting and retaining your staff. That's, that's, that's the district's second pillar of the five-year plan. And I wondered, does that still match? Is that still something that I can hang my hat on? Last week, in the three days, three days early last week, I received five unsolicited emails from districts around the state looking for people with my certification. I'm choosing to stay in Sheboygan because this is my twentieth year and I'm comfortable here, but I can't sustain that if I can't pay my bills. Like somebody else said, I can't pay my mortgage on teacher pride and love for my students. The bank requires real dollars. When I looked at my paychecks, my gross pay stayed within a hundred dollars since twenty eighteen. The months that I made more were because I was doing extra. At the end of my career, I really don't wanna hope, man, I was a great department chair, or that year that I was a learning leader was like, I was, I was great. That's not what I want. I wanna be a great teacher, and I want you to compensate me for being a great teacher. So, that's what I'm hoping as you are learning all the numbers and where money can come from, we're real people, with real families, teaching the community's real kids, and we need to be valued, and we need to feel valued, and that's your pillar. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Wetzel, W-E-T-Z-E-L. My address is sixteen thirteen South Twenty-sixth Street in Sheboygan, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Pigeon River Elementary School, and I am the current president of the Sheboygan Education Association. I am speaking today on behalf of the Sheboygan Education Association and the hundreds of teachers that have signed on in support of this statement from North, South, Central, Warner, Horseman, Change, Urban, Farnsworth, Jackson, Wilson, Jefferson, James Madison, ELC, Grant, Sheridan, Pigeon River, A-Tude, Lincoln Ernman, Cooper, Cleveland, and Longfellow. We understand, we understand that the Consumer Price Index, or CPI rate, this year is historically high at eight percent. We also understand that the state of Wisconsin has tremendous work to do when it comes to better funding public schools as our schools are consistently underfunded. We know that our state legislatures continue to put more money in private schools through voucher programs that take essential funds away from our public schools, our students, and our teachers. However, we reject the idea that teachers' cost of living adjustments should be minimized to make up for this year after year. When teachers are not given a cost of living adjustment to their pay, it affects everything in their daily lives. We've heard tons of stories this evening, rent, gas, groceries, clothes, even toilet paper. All of these necessities cost more, and our teachers are struggling to afford these increases without a simple cost of living adjustment. We should not feel guilty that we want to be able to afford shelter, gas, and food. It's no secret that many teachers often work second or third jobs to help make ends meet. Many teachers in Sheboygan have to teach summer school, coach, give plasma, bartend, or sell things through eBay to help with additional costs. I'm going into my nineteenth year of teaching in this wonderful district, and until three years ago, I had two jobs, taught summer school and taught summer school to help supplement my teaching income. Our staff has willingly weathered the conditions of near stagnant salary increases for the better part of a decade out of loyalty and dedication to our community's children. We love what we do. We love what we do. Year after year, throughout this same time, we've watched the district's fund balance savings continue to grow substantially. We ask that you use this budget cycle as an opportunity to make an investment in our teachers and that the admin meaningfully negotiate with us. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that's willing to speak? All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your comments. As we stated, we will get back to you as soon as we can. All right, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Good afternoon, good evening, welcome again, everyone in the audience. The twenty-twenty-three Wisconsin RTI Center recognized twelve schools across our district and the work that our outstanding staff have done. This is the last year that the Wisconsin RTI Center, as it has been disbanded through the EPI, but I do wanna take an opportunity to recognize those schools who have celebrated their progress in expanding, refining, and sustaining the implementation of systems of support around academics and behavior. At the Browns, there's bronze level, silver level recognition tonight. In bronze level regarding behavior, Cooper, Grant, Lincoln Ernman, Pigeon River, and Change Academy were recognized. At the silver level for behavior, Cleveland, Jackson, James Madison, Longfellow, and Wilson Schools are being recognized. Jefferson is being recognized at the silver level in reading and math, and the bronze level at behavior, and Sheridan is being recognized at the silver level for behavior and reading, and the bronze level for math. And finally, Urban is recognized at the silver level for reading and math. Again, based on the process that's occurring with the Wisconsin RTI Center, this is the last year of those recognitions. Each year for the past ten-plus years, we've been able to have multiple schools like these examples be recognized for outstanding work. On another note, thank you for those, the board members are able to join us today at the Baptist School Bash. That was held for all employees and their families at South High and the Fieldhouse from about eight-thirty to about one, one-thirty this afternoon. Lots of vendors, raffle prizes, and a scavenger hunt, which allowed staff to earn wellness points towards a reduction in healthcare costs. The Community Blood Center, Blood Mobile, was also, also there, and we did a blood drive, and thank you to all those donating blood. This week also marks our new teacher orientation. We were happy to welcome sixty-five-plus teachers to orientation yesterday, in which we were able to help them get to know the district, where we're headed as our goals and opportunities. They also had an opportunity to engage with one another as coming new into a workplace environment can sometimes be challenged as they're trying to build those relationships. We also hosted a refined mentor program. Want to thank both the school principals and staff teachers that helped to redefine the mentor program, and for each of the teachers that we have, a mentor or more is selected for those teachers, and we thank the staff for being mentors and serving in that capacity. They were here yesterday as well, and it was a wonderful luncheon provided by the district to have the mentors, the principals, and the new teachers get to know each other and develop and continue those relationships. Next week, with school being, first day of school being two weeks away from today, sorry everyone, summer is over, two weeks away from today, we will mark our district-wide pre-session next week. It will be a staff district-wide meeting that will take place Monday morning at eight o'clock in the South High Acuity Fieldhouse. The focus of that meeting will be to welcome everyone back for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, sharing information, as you already heard, of our district goals and opportunities, and share some, I will have an opportunity to share some of my perspectives as I finish my thirty-first year of education, twenty-fifth year here in the Sheboygan Area School District. The McKinney Homeless, McKinney Vento Homeless Assistance Act, you've heard of before, our district has been a recipient of that grant many years. Over three hundred children annually or more are provided assistance that are deemed as homeless, whether they're doubling up with a family member, whether they're living in an abuse or neglect shelter, whether they're living in a Salvation Army, living in motels. We were fortunate to receive fifty-five thousand dollars that will go, and Amy Dolmas is our homeless liaison, that'll go to support those families, supplies, materials, transportation costs, support to find housing, employment, et cetera, all done under these federal funds. And once again, we've received a grant, so we're very fortunate to be able to provide that assistance to our families. Already mentioned, two weeks from today, September fifth, is our first day of school. We welcome everyone back. Just a side note, Lake Country Academy, with their charter status, is beginning their first day on Monday the twenty-eighth, so they will be their first district school to be in session. As you will see later on the agenda, right after, I believe, my report, you'll be seeing the confirmation of our house construction project for twenty-two, twenty-three, but I do want to make sure you get it on your calendar, September twelfth at nine fifteen will be the groundbreaking for this year's house construction project, which will also be right over here in Stonebrook Crossing, next door to the house that we hope to sell this evening. And then finally, Jill and Jenny, I wanted to remind you that the Wasby twenty-twenty-three Fall Regional Meeting is actually scheduled for our board meeting night of, of October twenty-fourth. There was a listing of other events you could attend in other areas close to us, but our Region Eight meeting is the same night as a board meeting. There will be, however, an online regional meeting that you could attend online on November the first. That information will send to you. If there's something that you'd like to sign up for, just make sure you get back to Jill on that. And then also, for those of you who are interested in attending the State Education Convention, January seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth, please let us know. We'll continue to remind you of that opportunity as well. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone have any questions for Seth? All right, thank you, Seth, for your report.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, under miscellaneous, we have confirmation of Zella House Construction Project, Mark Binkley, and Mary Duggan.
I'm back. So, you might be wondering to yourself, I thought back in June, we approved the sale of the house construction project from twenty-two, twenty-three, and the answer to that is yes, you did. Unfortunately, the buyer failed to meet his side of the agreement, and ultimately, that agreement was terminated. Subsequently, we relisted the house. It was on the market for approximately a month at the price of four twenty-nine-nine, and after about a month, we reduced that price to four nineteen-nine, which then generated an offer from a prospective buyer of four hundred thousand dollars. He countered at four-ten, he countered at four-hundred. So, because it was really the only interest beyond showings that we received in a couple of months, we decided to go ahead and agree to that offer. So, the good news is that, as you may recall, our cost to build the home with lot included was about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So, we still anticipate netting about sixty thousand dollars at least on this, on the sale, so. And the good news on this one, we have received the earnest money from this buyer. It's with the title company, so. I'll take questions from the board.
So, the final price is four-ten?
It's four-hundred.
Oh, I'm looking at the counter, oh, that's counter, I'm sorry, thank you, I see it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just for a refresh, I remember, what did we originally sell, attempt to sell this house back in June?
Four twenty-four-nine.
Okay, so, we had a bit of a haircut, but, but on the other hand, we're still making money, and that's gonna go right to, back to the, back to the, the house. money and that's gonna go right to, back to the, back to the house project, so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have one to two lots in the same subdivision, Stone Creek, just down the street here, that we're looking at purchasing for future lots. We do already have a lot in place and it will be construction on this year's project within the next, including great ground.
September 12th.
Well, we have the groundbreaking on September 12th. We'll actually have, you know, the whole will be done a few days from the minute.
All right, is there a motion to approve the property sale at 5510 Chine Lane, Sheboygan, Wisconsin, which is owned by the Sheboygan Area School District and is no longer needed for school purposes? The accepted offer of the house is $400,000 and the closing is to be on or before September 6, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, if they oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mark.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, Seth, we can take item E to R unless board members have any discussions on any of those topics.
That's correct.
All right, so, okay. I would like to separate out line item E, the staff and school use of personal communication devices.
So E?
Mm-hmm.
So I seek a motion to approve items B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, and R.
Now you gotta finish up the rest of the oath.
Not today. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, back to item number E, the adoption of secular reading of the new Board of Education Policies, 7530.02, staff and school officials use of personal communication devices.
I, I know it's not, it's, we've not approved the Department of Public Security yet, but I plan on voting against this policy. My feeling is, is that the, there's not enough language, there's no language in there, as I mentioned this previously, in regards to what the school district is going to do to, you know, to protect the liability of those of us who do use our own personal communication devices for school district business, you know, and there's been, you know, we don't get, we don't have a separate cell phone, you know, for, just for school district stuff. And, you know, and the fact is, is that when I'm done with an email, I delete it, or done with a text, I usually delete it. And there's, there's nothing in place that if it's a school district text or a school district email, that I can send it to, to say that, you know, to basically keep it, protect it. And, and I know I talked about this and have knocked her back from the, from the team, from the, you know, from the people who do these things, and because I don't feel that the, I don't feel that things are, that the policy is, does anything to address, you know, to address that, I'm gonna have to vote against it. Mark?
Is this to suggest that you don't think any of our employees should be using their personal electronic devices while working for the district?
I'm talking, you know, I mean, there are times that you do, you know, you get an email.
Then it would behoove us to have a policy on that, at least start there.
Well, I think the policy governs the whole district, not just the board.
Right.
I'm sorry?
I said the policy governs the whole district, not just the board.
Well, absolutely, but if you don't have a policy on the use of your personal electronic devices, then they shouldn't be allowed to be used, is only logical.
If, if I may.
Glad, Seth.
Ryan, I understand what you're talking in terms of structure or process. I think there's two things at play here that we need to work through. Number one is the state statutes around open records law and pertaining to our employees and our board members are real clear. This policy actually articulates what those statutes are.
Correct.
So there's that side of the equation of saying, well, there's the state statutes and the interpretation from the Attorney General about how we have to keep records and record retention. That's, and this policy is really outlining what that is. But I hear you articulating is, you have concern about the policy from a, how do we implement the policy piece? Happy to take this and come back with an implementation process around emails and district emails and so forth. That is not, that's something that's already done on the backend. What I heard you really talking about was text messages.
Text to text, voice mails.
For all of our district employees that we require to have a cell phone, whether that's a teacher, administrator, support staff person, myself included, the option is always whether or not the district's providing a secondary phone that's purely from the district, or whether or not those individuals who are required to have that cell phone are, are given a stipend for part of the cost, which would be towards the time that they'd be using that for professional work, with the understanding that as part of that stipend, that they are agreeing to meet these expectations that are already communicated, they're just not clear as what Mark referenced in policy. So the statute's there, we have to follow it. This is really trying to flush out that statute. I do understand your concern about process and I certainly can come back with some processes around texting specifically, but that is, unfortunately, no matter what we do with the process, it's still the onus is on the individual from the state statute. And this is just trying to articulate more clearly within our policy what the statute is.
Yeah, and that's, my issue isn't with the, isn't with the state statute, I get that it's clear, but it is the process. And again, thinking specifically as board members, because we don't have a cell phone, you know, that's, that's, that's a district's cell phone. And we don't get a stipend either, but I'm not saying that we should. But, but because of, because of that, as a, as a, you know, as a board member, that is something I do have a concern with and, you know, and for the, and, you know, and just given how people are being much more aggressive with open records laws, you know, not only in terms of school board members, but also in the community, I want to make sure that we, that that part of the, that the process itself is, is very clear. And that's, but I appreciate your explanation.
Just to clarify, my phone, my, my cell phone, because I don't have a home phone, is listed under my name as a board member. Our teachers often have their phone numbers listed in ways that are accessible, and people do get phone calls at home on their private devices. What restrictions are there on using those? And are we informing our teachers and our staff about this law and how it works?
The open records laws and process are communicated. This would be the new policy that would further define and communicate those, those pieces. In our technology policies, there's some duplication or overlap in referencing to other policies around email use, disclosure of information, privacy data, et cetera, that are there. I think what we can take a look at, I mean, it would be up to you as a board to decide whether or not, if it's about the communication and personal phone versus district home phone and how you want to handle it, that'd be something that you'd want to take up as a group of, is that an option or an opportunity you want to provide board members?
Okay, so I'm still not completely understanding the open records on a phone call that comes on my cell phone at home.
It's not about the phone call itself, if that's not open records, it'd be if somebody left you a voicemail.
Voicemail or text.
Or text you.
Okay, so somebody voicemails or texts me at home.
At home, correct.
Open records can access that?
It could be open, it could be successful to, could be accessible from an open record standpoint, yes.
So then, am I not to answer those things?
Well, I guess you can answer. I mean, maybe we, you know, if we're less concerned about it, we should get some legal direction, but I guess my approach has always been, you can only provide what you have and what you can provide, and there's a certain amount of reasonableness. I delete texts and emails and stuff on a personal level, and if I'm conducting my personal business that way, unless it's something significant that's going through the email server itself, I don't, I mean, you, you know, it would have to be a pretty significant thing that I think would, you would probably recognize as being a pretty significant thing to have to save and, and send to somebody, as opposed to just to, you know, a call from one of the teachers here saying, please support what we've spoken to about tonight. I don't know how that would be an earth-shattering record to have to provide.
But when someone asks for a records request, it has to be very pinpoint and specific, correct?
That is correct.
So, I mean, they, if they're trying to get records of a phone, the conversation between you and someone else, they have to be very pinpoint in what they're trying to retrieve, and that's all they can have.
But if I don't have it, then what?
You don't have it, you don't have it.
But is this policy saying that we have to save it? Like if one of the teachers does call me and say, hey, you heard what, what I was saying tonight, I just wanna, just remind you that this is what's happening, and someone requests exactly those records, saying, did you receive a phone call from the teachers who spoke? I don't want to delete it if the policy is that I need you to save it.
The policy here will say that communications sent in that third from the bottom paragraph could be, especially around student records or public records, could be, in this case, considered public records in that. Again, if you don't have a record, you can't produce a record you don't have, on the same token as where Mark is talking about the reasonableness. I had no idea that so-and-so was gonna ask me for a voicemail message that they left me on, okay? But there are things, like for an example, on our email system, there are other state statutes that specifically talk about email and the seven-year requirement that we have to maintain emails. So there's a different, the statute's much more clear when it comes to emails. It's a lot fuzzier when it comes to voicemails and texting. And then, of course, what public, some of public officials have done, including our legislators, have excluded themselves from any open records requests. So it, it's a little fuzzy. I'm happy to, you know, we can table this, it's not the end-all-be-all. We could table and come back with some different solutions, some potential suggestions. We can bring back some more information regarding specifically voicemail and texting. I'm comfortable to do that. It's not like we have to get this policy done tonight.
Mark? No, but I would like to move approval so we have a policy in place, and if we need to tweak it or learn more about the implementation of it, we can do that in the future.
I think so too, because if this is a state statute, we're required to have the policy.
Mark, you gotta follow the statute no matter what, whether it's a policy or not.
So I would move approval if it hasn't been moved already.
Nope, so, first, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All right, no discussions, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Can we list that though, that it's something we do want to come back to?
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take note of that and we'll bring that back.
I don't, I don't think you voted for the other ones though. I think you had a first and a second.
No, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I missed that.
Yeah, he told me he wrote the alphabet.
Yeah. But Jenny, Jenny will take note of that, desire to have additional information.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the report of the committees, so we have Curriculum and Instruction Committee, okay?
Okay, so we did indeed do the diplomas already, and the other things are for discussion and information. Did a nice report from the school nurse representative, told us a lot of things about the healthcare, and we had one on this, we're required to do on, anyway, the security and restraint. We went through that one, and what was?
What was that?
Student health reports is from the nurse, seclusion and restraint, we have to do that annually, and that was on special ed primarily, but there were other things. And then the math report under Alex. All of those are, just for information and discussion, does anybody have any questions about that at all?
All right, okay. Human Resources Committee, Mark?
I would move approval of item number one, the appointments that were listed in the, the committee agenda, and item number three, the one retirement that was also listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next we have Facilities Recreation Theater Committee, Sarah?
Um, we just had just a brief update about the summer community recreation department programs, and just a brief facility permit report, which I believe was one line item. So that was just informational.
All right. Thank you. Also, Financing Budget Committee, Sarah?
Um, yes, so, let's see here, Fund 41 Capital Projects, Statement Cash Flow, and Revenues and Expenditures are there for your reading. Anybody have any questions on those? So those are just informational. Then we have the line item number four, Budget Revision and Transfer Appropriations. I move to approve the budget revisions and transfers of appropriations.
Did you have any actions on five and six as well, should we put them all together?
Yep, so we'll put five introduction, introduction and revised of Board of Education Policy 8405, that's included in the, in the, in the outlined items, and then introduction of revision Board of Education Policy 8600, Transportation.
Is there a second?
One second left.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Wonderful. And then just the gifts, to highlight the gifts that we had, we had monetary donation from Satori for Sheboygan Theater Company, $4,000.
All right. Thank you. Next, the Committee of the Hole, there was nothing to report out for that. Next, we have the Special Board Committee Assignments, the Sheboygan Public Education Foundation, Heidi?
That's me. Steph is celebrating their 20 years, it's their all-in, big, big poker night, baskets, raffles. I have your raffle tickets, if anybody wants my raffle tickets. And the new website is up, it's where you can also look at some of the prizes. The grand ticket raffle prize is a $1,000 gift card, and the person who won it last year had bought just one ticket, which I think is really fun. $1,000 travel voucher is one of the tickets, and then table prizes. So that is Friday, November 3rd, raffle and dinner, and you can register for the dinner on their new website.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. Next, we have the future meeting dates, so September 12, 2023, the committee meeting at 6:00 PM, and September 26, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting at 6:00 PM. Next, I seek a motion to adjoint to co- session for Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Section 1, Section C, to deliberate strategies to address specific issues pertaining to collective bargaining for teachers' mood to a roll call.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the roll call?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.